I'm all set for your call.
Call me in order at four o'clock.
We're on recording.
Please show me the foot regions.
My divisions to the by the United States of America.
Hey, have we got a list any of us? In the consolidated form? What we've got for phones and where?
I haven't seemed to find that in for the consolidation. We actually had to look and try to see who has what phone line. There are some we some we've gathered.
It was actually a written document at one point.
I'll look. I'll dig tomorrow into it and see if I can find something like that, but we've been having to look whose phone line and whose. And I know some are boxes, but there's some mystery numbers that we have no idea.
Can be a lot of, it's a couple hours work.
I have in contact to consolidate.
Oh, perfect. If I can have that, if I can't find, I'd appreciate it.
So we started asking questions about that a while ago. We've been working on it. We're trying to get resolutions from us that that feels like we actually call this because like. I had questions like, why do we have? Coming from home owners that are paying for it. And then we had, which the only thing I can think of is when you're an old, when you have a call in. Designated phone.
There was one number.
We still get in charge for that.
There was, there was, there was one left on the camera that wall.
I think that brings up one study.
Yeah, that is certain, yes.
Our office.
That's the basics.
Yeah, we have that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have.
Hello, everyone.
First order of business, Judy Chair, have we done that?
That's first order of business. Should do that first.
I make a motion and Leo become chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I get voted?
Aye, could stay in that seat for now.
You guys always said I talk too much anyway.
Take minutes. Sure. Right in the signature folder, we had a personnel action form. For Caitlin Pitts to promote her, promote her to town administrator. Starting affected immediately. To bear with me, my first one. Make a motion to accept the manifest for dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty four for the amount of twenty one thousand five hundred and eighty one dollars and sixty five sec, sixty five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Simmons, I.
See now.
I'm staying.
Make a motion for the manifest dated March twenty first, twenty twenty four in the amount of thirty five thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and ninety eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, seems a.
Aye. Board of Selectmen Minutes.
It's in the signature. They were. Are you sure? Minutes.
I got it. Make a motion to accept the minutes. Board of Selectmen Minutes for March fifth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Simmons, I.
We seen that.
What was?
March fifth.
March fifth, now I'm staying.
Correct. Make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's work session minutes for March seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Simmons, I.
See now.
Standing.
I'll be prepared next time. Sorry.
That's okay, no worries. That's my favorite. That's next, our appointments.
Events, brother.
Welcome back.
Yeah.
How's your vacation?
Good. I ain't even met you before.
Ron.
Right.
Thanks for being here also.
Nice meeting you again. Nice meeting you again, sir.
Good. I'll take the hand they did. Did you guys have your first, enjoy your first vacation and got on the nose how long?
It was very, very nice.
Yeah, good.
How long were you gone? Oh, should have done more.
I tried not to bug you too much, but.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Kevin kept it under control, I guess.
Well, he might be getting a little carried away, keeping it under control, but you did best you could. No, I'm just kidding.
Go ahead, Chris, since you're in charge of that roads.
Yeah, well, yeah, we still have those points. I don't want to continue to just have to really know. So we obviously, we still haven't signed the contract, so you guys had, but we wanted to have you in so we could. Talk about what, you know, our expectations and things like that this year and things we would like to see moving forward. As far as like the equipment list and things we, it's kind of new stuff to try out and things. We may be looking at different calcium chloride this year, like going magnesium instead. Might last a little bit longer. The reason why we put. We asked for stuff on a big bid sheet that wasn't in there, like the vibratory roll and the water truck and stuff. Is we may try to, if scheduling allows, we'd like to try to roll the roads and compact, you know, wet the roads and compact right after they graded. And try to do that with a schedule with the calcium or, you know, the dust control application, try to get them to last a little bit longer. We find that that does work pretty well in town of Austin for us on our dirt roads. They do last about. Depending on the rain and obviously we're relying on Mother Nature. We all are, right? At this point, we do dirt work. We got a lot of concerns and complaints about the early onset grading last year that took place and the piles of dirt that were left on the side of the road. Want to try to stay away from that this year. I do understand that you get that leaf debris in the dust that gets pushed off to the side, that nine percent of it's clean and the ditches out. And if it gets filed out by Kevin, if we could just get it cleaned up in a, you know, timely fashion. And held off to whatever the closest appropriate place. You know, if you guys agree, we'll continue to do the. You know, the request forms where people can request the material, take it to the closest location, they give that waiver. You know, releasing the liability or, you know, if we dump something there, whatever.
Do you want to have something signed? I would take a lot of it down, but you've already.
Yeah.
Take some up though. I used to take a lot of what I done at Edward's place.
Yeah.
But if you want to have something signed, I'll just have them get over you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you could do that, I mean, there's like you're working in a specific place and I'm sure Kevin will know. You know, Kevin or David, whoever is going to be working, will know the best insurance location and then we can get those forms, you know, to those individuals. Kind of like this time of year, we're doing the waiver thing. I will be discussing that to the road members. I know that. You sent out a lien on that too, but. Yeah, I just want. One more day. Yeah. Some other things we have to do is I'm sure you're aware that we had collapsed Culver on High Watch Road. That's going to have to be replaced. Actually had this point once, Chuck, look at it.
Kevin went up and filled it, is it?
Yeah, I was there. And we can continue to monitor. It hasn't been any worse. It's right at, I wrote down the address. What would hide him? Number sixty. It's a. Just past, just past winter room when it first swats out, the property that we just cleaned up just before that.
You had a sign there, didn't you, or some?
Yeah, there's still, there's still a sign there, so. It shifts an old old culvert, you know, seasonal culvert. Fortunately, it's not an active stream bed, so it's stayed what we put in there and compacted it pretty well. It has stayed. It hasn't washed any worse, even with the two rainstorms since then. But the pavement is going to have to be cut and the culvert is going to have to replace. So. And obviously it's a, it's a hot thing because it's, it's the nineteenth March. It's still winter. Yeah. I realize that. And you guys know, we hear it on a daily basis at our work. It's, you know, reminding people, it's still winter. It's still winter for another month. We have cold weather coming. We still have snowfalls coming. So please, I don't want to purchase anything that has to pay you this week. We're potentially going to have snow twice this week. And we, you know. We, when I say we, I mean, the town of Austin, we kind of, we didn't expect to get this much snow. We did that last summer. That Saturday, I got ten inches on my front roof. Push kind of means with no sand or anything in my truck, but. But the. You, you think you're going to get a loader and stuff this year that's making fun of the roads or a new backhoe or?
Yeah, I'm just going to use the loader.
Okay.
The backhoe. Retired.
Yes.
The one I'm playing?
Yeah. If they haven't contacted you or had any concerns about that being there.
Not yet.
Or it's got a flat tire on it.
Yeah, I kind of forgot about that. Yeah, I'll get that out of there. Yeah, I'm just going to use the small bucket loader this year, I think. Just because I really don't want to purchase another one of those. We use it enough. Basically what we used to use it for was loading salt and the salt shed and then doing the ditching in the spring. That's really all we've ever used it for. I'll just go with the loader like everybody else has always done.
I'm sure you've probably already, you already know that, I'm like Elm Street last year where you laid out some gravel on the asphalt. Before they reclaimed it. We made that part of the RFP this year, so they're just going to handle that whole thing. That forwards us more time and hopefully more time to do some, we'd like to focus on some ditching this year too.
Yeah, house.
Townhouse Road, you know, some shoulder work.
Yeah, I'd rather just have them do that, to be honest with you. Time I tried to schedule it in, do everything else, it never worked out right and they was always ugly and I was ugly. So just have them do it.
Yeah. And this is the last thing I'm going to say, and I'll teach you how to join in, but. If we could get some sort of plan together, give me a call. Rather, it's like we talked about last year, get some pot talk. And I know eventually, hopefully, next year, it's, it is going to be torn up, but in the meantime. You, I hate to throw away good money to a bad, but we have to do something about potholes. They have repetitive potholes upon the road. It is ninety percent of the phone calls and complaints that we get this Pine River Road. It's way worse, I'm sure you know, way worse than it's ever been. There are some areas that I still think that, you know, like we talked about last year, and because the rain didn't get to it. Put it down hot off and, and chimney it like the state did in some areas. Will go a long ways until, you know, it's a more permanent Band-Aid for a bullet wound as opposed to a.
I mean, you might as well do that. I don't know how much cold patch we bought in the last couple of years. It's probably cold patches more money than hot top, to be honest with you. The cold patch don't last, no matter what you do with it. There's just so much water sets in holes. Even after we cold batch it, the water just collects it in low spots and just blows it out. We're going to do something because I just ain't got the manpower to continually go out there and cold batch. Austin has a full-time crew. They can send somebody out there all the time to do it, but I got a full-time crew, but it's not a full-time job. So I'm constantly trying to squeeze it in and that's. It's, it's a struggle.
Do you plans? I know I drove Pine River this morning, so I. You got a really. Well, I had to go back to John's ear place, but you plan to get that patch this week or next week or?
Yeah, we did all the other ones.
Yeah, we saw that.
So it's fast, so even if you go on Pine River, you lose fifteen ton, you only go about third of the way, so. Kevin said I will do all the other ones, so it looks like we got something done. So, yeah, I got a pile out there to spread.
Great.
Beyond that, that's pretty much the first thing we got to do is get some.
And like Chris mentioned too, the, the ditching, I mean, with all the rain we've been having and stuff like that, if you notice on Townhouse Road, washing out the road. You know, kind of push.
Yeah, a lot of the paved roads, except for the ones we've done just recently, really need to be ditched. We usually do the dirt roads, but usually it spreads thin on money whenever you get to the end of the lane and. So we usually do the road we're working on, like Green Mountain and Elm Street got done. It's usually as far as it goes.
Yeah, Townhouse has done what, ten, fourteen years?
Yeah, it's been a while.
So it's still there quite a bit.
You're boned up on it? Do you have any questions or concerns for us?
Well, one thing I'd like to do, or have you guys do, we've got a few emails from.
Caitlin.
Caitlin. Because I didn't realize when you called and I told you we didn't get the thing. Basically, she gets about two hundred emails a day, of which a hundred and ninety are junk. So you guys didn't realize you would change the email address. So we just go down delete, 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 delete. So if you do change your email address, give us a shout. Don't email us because we're not going to get it. But if you guys do have stuff, I would like to have you email the, what needs to be done.
Okay.
That way, I type it. If somebody calls, my phone rings all day. And I'll answer it. Half the time I don't remember. And, you know, I have customers calling me looking for dirt and if I don't write it down, if I'm not right there, I'm usually in an excavator or something like that. Now, I'll write it down. I get back to the truck and I forget some stuff occasionally, get a little lulled up, so. If you can email it to us, that will, that way she can. Keep on top of it and get it on my desk so I see it every morning.
Yeah, and I myself, this year, have been trying to.
Yep.
Figuring that that would be the best, so there's like a chain and you have it in writing, so you know exactly where.
Well, that's it. You know, sometimes if you, if you don't get hold of me, Kevin, he'll call and tell me and I'll. Just like I get it and then Kevin will remind me and it's like, you know, it's a, a job. I do appreciate the work, but it is kind of a filling job. It's not like Austin where ten guys show up every morning at quarter to seven. My guys do, but they go everywhere. So. And so we come here to fill in basically water the bombs, so. But I just want to make sure you guys are happy and I think that would be a good way to. You've been in front of me, so I.
Got a problem?
And personnel wise, obviously, you know, about getting into the, you know. The, the guts of your, your company and stuff like that, obviously, Kevin's great. Kevin is a retired gentleman. Obviously, we know he's going to be missing some time this week. So, I mean, what is our, what is our as a town backup plan from you, so that if we have something, it's not the link?
Emergency?
Yeah, that's basically, if it's an emergency, I pretty much drop everything. Every time the town has had an emergency. Whatever needs to be done, we can drop whether it's the middle of the night, first thing in the morning, last thing in the bed. We've had plenty of those type of calls over the years and. You know, back when I was dealing, John Mize, John Young, he said, I realize this isn't your biggest paying job, but. And we're not first on your list, but when there's an emergency, we need to be first on your list. And I said, you are, so. But, you know, anything else, we'll get over and patch it or whatever, but it may take us a bit to get here to, like the culvert on High Watch, we'll keep an eye on it. If it goes bad, we'll get over there and do it, but. Other than that, if I have to, I mean, I've, I've run greater before. I do not do it. So if there was a problem with Kevin, so. I think they're about past that now. They've had a little tough sled here for the last year or so, but. I think they're on. And I think it crested the hill, so. But, yeah, if we have to, then I get, like you said, Dave, he, he's been working with Kevin B. I don't know if I'd put him in a grade, but he does everything else. If you have an emergency, we'll leave you.
All right.
Just don't have one when I'm on vacation.
Oh, you got plans this summer?
I get sleuth better this one and I'm thinking about problems now, I'll do it.
You can see that. I agree with you there. Anyas?
I don't.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
All right.
That's good.
We'll see you guys later. Thank you very much. We go to three day contract. People on three day contracts. You still, you still. Eight in December, but actually, I'm signing it now. The national, he signed it.
Where would sign? Your place assignments? There, 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 it's got it. I have a date yet. Why you asking?
It does have a label. Yeah, I know, but it's December day and Ron's having a.
Correct.
It's really shit.
You could sign it. I mean, I don't see why not.
I could actually sign it. At the fourth signing.
Yeah. That's what I would do.
I don't mind.
We're present with the information from Ron.
Because, yes, he signed it, but he wasn't supposed to.
We got mail.
So that's the guy that. You understand what that is, right? They're the ones that make sure that Avatar, they do. So I can check some down.
Oh, yeah, with the committee action report from Avatar. And I thought we had in the mail. That was pretty easy.
So, Leo.
Yeah.
Do it. I'll, I'll, I'll put my signature on about today's date on it, so it looks like I've counter signed it afterwards.
Thank you. Just put it. Right. What are the selection reports?
A whole couple of things. Let's see, I'm going to be taking the NHMA training for the local official workshop on the third of Concord. With the right to know on the seventeenth, doing a virtual workshop. And. Library requests to have. The. Okay, for the permit for the closed road. I sent an email to you folks the other day. So the library needs to have the town approve. The select board approve. Allowing Jordan's furniture to come in and deliver that.
I say closing the road.
No, well. And specifically the way I worded the email, which if we prove it, you send it back to Sarah and say, yes, they've got to use one fifty three. They've got to use Townhouse Road. That means they're only on five, six hundred feet of town road off the state road. And I know they probably want to cut across Elm Street, Green Mountain, but they can't do that. So that's with the approval, we're telling them what road that they can go on.
So you want us to vote on that?
Well, we do need to approve it.
Yeah.
Well, before we do, I want to have a conversation. So they, the state lifted the ban on one fifty three south yesterday. Oh, okay. They did one fifty three north, but they did one fifty three south. That was right from the formant of District three, three, oh, three shed. So twenty five south? Twenty five south is, is, is lifted. But we still haven't lifted ours. Nope, so I, I. I just assumed doing. I mean, I don't think that at this stage, I don't think they're going to get any more split than they are. The conditions in February before we actually posted them, when everything was sloppy, wet and we get all the rain, that's when the road should have been posted. We didn't post it until a week afterwards. The state's starting to lift theirs. That's usually kind of like a template. One others lift them, but. It's what we've followed in the past. I would suggest we lift them. They're starting to dry out. We are getting cold nights and stuff like that. And it may come back into it and, but I don't see that happening, so. You see issues with digital snowstorms coming up or anything like that, it would cause. I mean, frost is out of ground, so frost has been out of ground, so they're starting to dry. It's. I mean, it's windy right now. It's been windy every single day for six or seven straight days at night time. Feels dry. It's like I was surprised with no wind. Yeah, things are starting to dry out, so I just assumed lift the van affected today. And then that's a none, that's a moot point. We can have the conversations and the waivers. It's not worth it. Do we think we might need to keep it? Uh, yeah, but if people drive down, then they deserve it. They're closed anyways, so.
Make a motion, let me make a motion.
I, I can make the motion. I just didn't know if you, I'll make the motion to lift the road ends effective the nineteenth of March.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Caitlin, can you send Sarah and help tell her that second tonight that we flipped it?
Hi, Sarah.
I'm just still going to see it as home signature on stuff like that. Okay. From a couple of weeks ago, when I brought up the shingle issues on the library, are we done? Anything we're done?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
Can I start? Yeah, I honestly was also waiting to have the conversation with the chief. I thought maybe he was going to reach out to you to see if he was able to. Have a chat with the West office. I have not heard back from him yet. I'll follow up with him tomorrow. And I'll chase that with you and then if not, then I'll do some homework on him. Have you, you meaning the select board in two thousand twenty four, have you guys reviewed the rules of procedure? And the investment policy statement and adopt for twenty twenty four?
No, true.
Could you print copies of those for the next meeting, someone or send them out to everybody so we can just review them? If there's any changes, we can talk.
I know the investment policy was re-adopted.
It's going to be, it has to be adopted every year by law.
No, I know. I was just saying the last one was September. Because I was here when it got re-adopted, but I will send that one out along with, what was the other one? I'm sorry.
The.
Rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure. I got it.
Okay. And. I wonder if we can set a work session and I'm willing to start it in two phases. So the personnel policy. We actually have a massive draft of that done already.
I have that and I've been looking into it, so I do have that one and it's been a conversation. It has been a conversation that I would also like to revisit that and so we can get a finalized signed copy, so I am in agreement with that as well.
Okay, so what we had done in the past, Grace used to build those for MetLife. So she offered to be the head on that when we did it. So the bulk of the ready, you see in there, the chain is in there, are from what she did.
Yes.
The library, she just updated the libraries, which parallels ours quite a bit. And that has been approved. She submitted it in NHMA. They reviewed it and it came back and they've approved it. So between the two of those. I'll, you want, I can ask her to merge kind of the information that's there and then the four of us can meet or. This is there, and then the four of us can meet or. You mean Grace can meet or whatever.
This is, you have an existing draft right now, correct?
Yep.
And you want Grace just to update.
Some like. We we need, there's like three areas where we need to sit down and look at those in detail. Which a lot of it's around the vacation policies and things like that. Because the the part-time policy we have right now, where we've in the past, I don't know if you did it last year, but previous couple of years to that. We made an, we made a slight decision to allow part-timers to have vacation. That's not even in this personal policy.
Correct.
So that was part of it, the def- defining of what that was and how that would work. Who gets benefits and wherever that was all needed to be redone.
So we uh, just need to have a work session so we can all stand on it.
And get it ahead of time. Everybody can look at it right now because of the red line that's in it. It's well fifty pages.
Fifty pages of red liner? I didn't see that.
It's fifty pages long now because of the red lines.
Right.
Cause there's a bunch of stuff that was out of order, so it's been completely reordered, but the document tracking keeps everything and that's a long one. Um, but then we can sit down and just finish that off and get that done, because that's. We do old.
Can we set a work session?
Shouldn't take that long to do it.
Yeah, highlight, sorry, you want to do this later?
Next couple of weeks or three weeks, whatever. I mean, it's been six years, so.
Okay.
Another couple of weeks. Carol Fisher in the town meeting the other day brought the fact that she's got an issue with the. Laptop and wire.
Yeah, we.
Okay, so the library actually has a laptop. Which they're going to make a decision on at their next trustees meeting and giving to. The supervisor, the checklist, getting it to the town. The supervisor, the checklist. Um, it's in great shape. It's a couple of years old, but it's way better than what they're using. And it will just need to have the um. Technologies of the company. Just make sure it's up to snuff with the software that you need within the town and the private drivers are set up. Carol should be a note. She's got like seven or eight, six or seven printers in there. And I'm. Walls my mind. She's got to use that many printers in this town to. Get her stuff going. She's got stuff in here. She's got stuff there. She's got stuff she uses on site. Um, and I don't have all the drivers, so she'll she'll need to work with. Uh, the computer guy to gather drive machines for that.
Yeah, we're scheduling the electrician with the same time with the transfer station.
Okay, alright. Um, last but not least, um, Carroll County Communications District monthly meetings tomorrow morning at ten o'clock in the Carroll County Amex Building. Opened up publicly for anybody that wants to attend. It will be a short meeting. Um, and the historic town hall. Library preservation project monthly meeting is tomorrow night at the library at six o'clock. And anybody that wants to attend, we appreciate it. We are defining tomorrow night what the phase three. Plan will be, what gets captured in phase three. And that will define what our fundraising goals will be within the timeline, the timeline we have to try and get. That phase one, two, and three completed by August two thousand twenty-eight. And there'll be some items that are not going to make the top. Uh, just due to the price tags, so um, we would like everybody's input if needed. That's it, chief.
Uh, so we already talked about the load limits, uh, planning board meeting for tomorrow. The work session is canceled. Um. Roads, obviously, we discussed the sinkhole on High Walk Road and that we'll continue to monitor that one. As well, and they'll continue to monitor it. Kevin has been as well, um, as well myself. He's been doing some road grading. Uh, which. Goes to show that the roads have dried out, so. Uh, pretty good shape there. They didn't really do much today. Hopefully, the cold patch will get done tomorrow. Or the next day, which it may not, because it is supposed to snow tonight. For those that were aware of that.
That's why I looked the pile over.
Um, and we were talking about laptops. Last one of one meeting we had, it was such, and there was a laptop case in that file cabinet over there. And it seems that there was a laptop that the planning board used to use. The walked out thing. There was a, I was to take something back because Len Hart said. David went to use a laptop. And you, I had to take to the planning board rather or not. They still.
Yeah, I was asking if they still use it.
Where is it? Cause it wasn't in there the other day.
It's underneath.
Bottom drawer.
Bottom drawer.
They dug in there the other, oh, maybe they did try to open it up, but. So. They basically said they don't use that laptop, so. Um, it's that, or he's gonna send all that debt based on they don't use that.
Yeah, that was the one that the ZBA and the. Planning board were keeping all their files on, and then the budget committee jumped on with them, so all three of us. Had been using it. We still, budget committee still uses it and updates it. So the ZBA was using it. Nate used to take that with him to meetings. I don't know if they bought him another one or I don't know, but that that was the one he used to use at the ZBA and the planning board.
Yeah, so maybe that's the thing is they didn't, they weren't aware that Nate was using it, but the planning board, as far as the planning board goes, George and. They said, we never used that laptop.
Well, previous to George being chair, they actually did download that file from the planning board on.
So they're using their own personal computers.
No, they're not. Well, yeah, Grace uses hers quite often, well, not quite often, she has it.
Yeah, when she's doing minutes, she administers, she does it right.
Yeah, and then. Joanna's been bringing hers and has been doing the minutes for the last few months, so.
Okay. Does the library have an extra laptop? You want to give it?
Well, yeah.
How many do we need?
Well, I think the issue was if if and when we hire, they hire somebody. He's not here on Tuesday nights. About day. Eight to two.
Yeah, and then something till six on Tuesdays.
They start soon next. Two weeks from now. It starts two weeks from now.
I didn't like calling it till six.
I misunderstood what you said.
It'll be posted online.
I don't have computers, so. This is an old one, I gotta believe.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 pretty old. It's an old one, right? Use it.
Yeah, it's.
And Lenhart had the conversation with the fact that the budget committee uses it too, right? Cause there was some issue that they they needed to do something, they were afraid they were going to lock people out.
No, they were asking if the other um. The other drive, so there's planning zone and also on there as a drive. And asked me, do they use this? And that's why I brought up the question. Cause Dave uses it for his budget committee stuff. I had to get that drive back and reactivated.
So there's the, there's the key right there. When you were saying Dave, I thought you were talking about David Hines, who's using it.
Sorry.
That David for budget committee.
So we have two uh, boards using a laptop. You're using it plus the ZBA.
Uh, yes. Does the ZBA use that laptop?
We're down to one.
And Nate doesn't go in there and grab a laptop? Does when Nate's here, does he have a laptop?
That's the one he used to use, so he used to use it, yeah. So I don't know what happened. It wouldn't difference. I mean, I I assume they would still use.
Yeah, if they, if so, I would say we went to your question. I would say we need another one. If it arises and we. We being the planning board. Might have a planning board, which has.
Um, well, you could answer Jared, trustees, if you want to know the planning, we're choosing a meeting with you.
Right, right.
Yeah, I would recommend instead of them using a person, if you have, the library has an extra laptop.
Right, there's a, so the answer to the question is there's one there.
Right.
Minutes and things like that. Once, once they hire a. Well, I'm going to call a recording secretary for for now, for the planning board.
When that happens, in terms of discussion.
Okay.
That does answer those questions. Um. And again, talking about planning board, stealing one of their ideas that we all, that planning board, people that were attending meeting. On the bottom of their agendas, they have um, like to-do list. And it's reminders for for the boards of unresolved things, things that need to be done. Um, I don't know what, I wanted to open that for a conversation to have that on our agendas. So you have like phones. File cabinets, things that we've talked about that are, that I take notes of. I'm sure that Leo has too. That is, until they resolve, we keep them on. So they're ongoing, and then we can just look to you and say. Uh, I don't know what you guys think about that. It's like memo.
I I don't mind that idea, yeah, but I'd rather do it as like a second page, slightly Excel sheet. So that you can move stuff on and move stuff off. Because mine list usually get pretty long.
So you're saying it's something like that, what Rebecca provides?
Yeah, but not in some detail.
No, no, basically day.
Yeah. Here's the data we started.
Right.
And.
And then better data resolve.
Somebody's in charge of managing the issue, you just put that on there.
Yeah.
If not. And then when it's resolved, you just take it off.
The treatment markers.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's checks and balances. That way nothing falls from the crack and then get gotten about, and then we wind up.
Yep.
You know, just kicking the can down the road and.
I like that idea.
So just start that up. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Department reports.
Are you going to get a level?
No. Never have nothing. I always cover, I always come in and. I'm behind the scenes.
The only thing I have is pretty much the update from the town meeting. I know there was a question regarding the seven thirty-seven. So when there was questions regarding the revenues that were on there. Fortunately, I left my stuff here, so I didn't have the answer right at town meeting, but I got all the answers. So there, the question that arose for the MS seven thirty-seven regarding revenue. Under a few accounts, um. The accounts being three thirty-nine, sorry, thirty-three fifty-nine, which is railroad tax distribution. Um, we did come to find out that was unanticipated funds for L chip and newsplate grant. However, on that seven thirty-seven, it just shows up as railroad tax. But for the five thirty-five that. You that is utilized from the auditor. Um, that actually says other, and then in parentheses, including railroad tax. So it's two separate things. But it doesn't actually state it on here. Um, so the, that amount there was from the L chip and uh, birth plate grants. Um, there were another question regarding thirty-four oh one, which was income from other departments. Um, I had reached out to our auditor to kind of clarification on that to see what these funds were from. Um, he did state that they were primarily um, police details. Um, but they were misposted against uh, cash originally. So that's why they're showing up there. Um. It also includes. Um, planning board income and income from departments. I know Leo, I believe you had asked about the solid waste thing. That is actually a special revenue fund, so that's why nothing is stated there. Um, three five oh three was the last one. That's the one that had that really big hundred and ten thousand amount. Um, what that is there, um, he stated that includes donations from the historical society for town hall preservation. Um, plus amounts for town and timber sale, insurance refunds, franchise fees, refunds and reimbursements. So those amounts right there are what that came from.
When we did the fundraising for the keynote, it all went in. To the general, I wonder if that's where it was, because that was a. If I remember right, it was pretty close to twenty thousand dollars.
It was twenty-one, and who said that?
So if that, if that helps clarify anything as well.
Yeah, twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Part of it.
Okay, so I just figured out for them, maybe they'll clarify if that didn't show up.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Makes sense, Dave?
Oh, yeah, like we stated, to me, when what you see is only an excerpt, you don't see the whole listing of what's under that number.
Right.
He learned it is. We'll bring that detail next year, because that question probably will come.
The bring files.
Oh, yes. I learned.
I did have one more. Um, so the gentleman that sold the town, the anchor system. From White Mountain. AV. Joe Deegan. I talked to him the other day, and he's gonna do me a solid and come over. He said, it'll take a few minutes. I want to build the town. Just a story, refresh my memory as an AV geek. To get the the anchor system, the speakers and stuff back up running the microphones. So I'm gonna schedule that. Obviously, I want to talk to you guys first. Before I went ahead and do that. And then we'll get him, get him over. I just have to find the rest of the microphones, because I issued four.
Yeah, three prices, right?
I don't think it's.
But there used to be one here, and when I came in this morning.
And if you look at the, if you look at that anchor and you look at the, the wireless. Um, controller, there are supposed to be four, so. Total mics, so. But. We'll get that. It's been twenty years since I was an AV geek, so I'm kind of a little rusty.
Technology's changed.
That's still the same, but this is.
Next order of business, uh, lecture, I guess that's done. Uh, assignments for departments and boards. So. I mean, we got, we'll start with roads. Make a motion.
Chris.
Chris.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I don't have a.
You need transfer station?
Transfer.
That was down the hill.
I was kind of want to do it too.
Go ahead, if you want it.
I've got some plans.
Okay.
You got it?
That's good. With the board of. Um, planning boards.
I've done it before. I was on the planning board, if you want, I'll do it. I don't mind that.
You don't, really?
I, I know, I know, that's all I'm.
But don't, don't.
Don't try that. You want it? I don't want to take it from you. You still want to sit there.
I, I am not gonna lie. I'm not gonna lie. It's absolutely no offense to them whatsoever. Um. I think that we, you know, I think we all worked well together, but. Given my life and schedule and stuff like that, if I had one less nighttime meeting that sometimes goes on and. With the hearings and stuff. I would not say no to let you do that.
Makes sense.
I don't know. I see him giving the check release. I'm not really sure what's going, but it's win-win for me, that's all.
Uh, Preservation Society.
There was a check for the Preservation Society, Chris.
I know, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
John T.
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, but it could be. I'll pay it. Great.
Sure.
What else?
I'll do the uh, historic district mission.
That was one I was just going to bring up.
Slash heritage commission. Unless you guys want to take on, take over the historic town project, I'll continue that.
Not yours. You're still shocked.
Yeah.
Now loving it.
No, it's absolutely against the law for, because we are their Board of Appeals. By state statute, so. Which. It's, brings up a good question. When I get emailed. Is that? Should I not be getting emailed? Yeah. Okay, just.
Yeah, just for.
Yeah.
Ultimately, we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
Just, just to interrupt, um. Melissa said, um, I think they should vote on the appointments.
Let's, let's, let's list them, well, let's list them all, and then we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Um, I know. Um, I know Lenny's cemetery trustee, you vote on that one, keep him in or stay in?
I I would like to, yeah. I think that's the last one, so we'll, we'll start now. I'll make a motion to uh, continue with Lenny Espy as being the cemetery trustee.
I agree, second.
Alright, you want to read the, read the list so far?
Okay, uh, make a motion, Rhodes.
Rhodes, you, running Rhodes, Chris, just. One thing I want it is, I want to make a motion.
Alright, Rhodes, Chris, Transfer Station Leo, Budget Leo. H H, um. Chuck. Um. Planning Board.
Chuck.
Chuck.
HTC Chuck.
H what?
HTC.
HTC.
District Commission. Make a motion approval.
I can, second.
I can your motive. Hi.
Hi.
Beneficial enough.
You're confusing me.
I I I think it, I think it's official. Um, my only question is, should someone be, um. Oh, what's the word? I can't think about, I'm sorry. Did someone also be appointed, you know, maybe where their transfer station, should someone be appointed to town hall business? Police Department, fire department, zoning or? Tell me who to call.
Those aren't.
Just, just for example, if someone were to have a question, should they be going and calling each individual?
Time administrator.
Well, what if I had a question?
Welcome to.
Call, but you know, for example, like if they, you know, run into an emergency thing.
So if you have a question, my thing would be the chairperson.
Uh, unless it related to one of the plank, uh, the departments, I'd probably refer to.
Anything that's not on here should go.
Right.
As the chairs.
Right.
Alright.
Like what Lenny did, like you were doing once.
Same comment that I had, but Rose, I call Chris, anything else, they usually call my name. Not you, Leo.
Alright. You all set?
I'm good.
You all set, guys?
Yeah. I think we get all the boards, thank you.
Hey, next uh, business is the Office Machines Corporation.
Alright, so pretty much, um, each of you have a copy, what you have is you have. Um, the email from the gentleman at Porter Office, you have. Um, two separate options, you have a black and white and you have a color and then on the very back. Back of it, you have the printer itself. So pretty much the printer we have in the office is outdated. Um, and who we had previously was charging us overages and we were getting fifteen hundred dollar bills. Um, the agreement that was made previously, I believe was back in twenty. Few years ago.
Per quarter, right?
It was six thousand copies we were. At, they gave us six thousand copies per quarter. And then we got charged over, so we get charged a fifty thousand extra copies. And that went, you know, three cents a copy, so we got fifteen hundred dollar bills on top of our quarter bills. Of two hundred dollars. So, um, looked into Porter Office, um, and. They're a lot better than what we were having. They pretty much have, um, few different options regarding the printer itself, we could do lease, we could do purchase, I wanted to get everything that. They could give me. Um, they have two different types of leases, they have like your standard car lease where you pay and buy it at the end. Their terms are sixty months. They also have a lease where we pay every month and then it's a dollar buyout. Or you can buy out in full. Um, they do not give us a limit. They charge us for what we print. So we will not get overage charges, we will get paid for what was actually printed out. Um. Also in this, um, scenario, they will not be estimating as our previous company did. They will get an actual read from the copier. Instead of estimating.
This will be hooked up to the internet too, correct?
Times, and includes parts, labor, consumer. What's your record with it? So if you're doing one of these.
I mean.
I think we need color.
Huh?
Do we, I don't think we need color.
We were talking about it pre- previously with, when we had the person here, and the reason why we were talking about it is, you know, the clerk's office sometimes pretty color. I would come to think of it. If they have a color copy right there, I don't see a need for having a color copier. Personally, I just want something that's faster, something that I don't start printing and then I can go home and come back and it's still be printing. Um, so. I'm okay with a black and white one.
So the color printer is in the.
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office, how old was that one?
Not a hundred percent how old, it does look like a newer one.
But that's a state approved because yes.
Not the state approved, that's not the state one, that one was one that was already purchased out. It is HP, I want to say it's probably. Within the last. Five, eight, seven years. For that printer.
Four years or four.
Yeah, we can talk about that after, I mean, we can, once we, let's prove this, you want to prove.
That one, the printer in the clerk's office is not kind of. Contract, that was one that was bought out, that's the town's responsibility.
And Alan uses the big disc player most time at clerk's office, you know?
Your question's more leaning towards the the ne- necessity of us having a color copy.
I mean, how how often do we do color with any of the departments in you?
I think it's very rare.
Oh, you were going for that point.
Yeah, I just, you know, I see the need for color, but I, if it's not a big usage item and we got access. Then.
And Tyler just said that they colored too.
Our color too, if they needed to use it.
So.
There. That's an extra forty bucks a month.
I got your computer, I mean, I got your printer, that's why I know that one's shut up. I think it's the same one that's out here.
So in the, in the. If it was a presented as it often, more often was the point you're getting at. How old are these, are you going to wear them out, but if it's only doing it once in a while, that's it's an old issue of.
That did, we did a lot of talking. We did research ahead and.
In this. With this maintenance agreement, where it's hooked up to online, they know up there. When a toner is getting low and things like that, right, and they automatically.
Correct.
Ship it or bring it down and put it in.
Correct.
Right.
And so how much is maintenance for that?
It's on there. It's all part of the payment.
So if we're doing the lease, it's part of the lease, but if we're doing the purchase, it's going to be in addition to purchase. Purchase usually does not include maintenance.
I need something to be asked.
If I. I like the idea of the lease anyway. Because of the usage that we have in the town office. And the fact that the equipment wears out and nobody pays attention to it. If that cost is built in and we're doing it in the regular budget, I know, it'll get upgraded every five years, which it should be anyway. And when this thing comes up, get the next one.
I I personally would aim towards the lease as well. I feel like it would be a better option because. I had to personally reach out for that one, no one has. Come to us to ask us about the printer, no one's questioned our overage shopping. So I think a lease would.
So we have two, we have two options, we have a payment a hundred and nine bucks.
So what's the difference between, what's the difference in the ten bucks, what are we getting for the ten bucks?
So the. That's the dollar buyout lease option, that means at the end of it, you buy it out for a dollar. Or you have a hundred and nine, where it's like a card, you could buy out at the end or redo your lease with something newer. I personally think, I mean, totally up to you guys as well, but I think just doing the standard. Leave could probably be a good idea because I'm sure in five years, a lot of people will get by upgrading a new one. So.
Yes. Worst case scenario, end of year, what's the cost? Not. Not a hundred and nine dollars, you know, so we talk in.
Well, including point zero zero eight, four two papers, just the price.
Right.
Which we don't have an estimate. Actual estimate.
Well, how many copies have you been doing?
Well, it depends, right now, probably, I mean, the recent one, recent, oh my gosh, recent month probably haven't been the best because it's been budget season and all that stuff. Yes, that is every year.
That's built into.
So, pretty much, I mean.
Twelve thousand, fifteen thousand?
I would probably say eight. Roughly.
Eight thousand a year?
Oh, a year?
Eight thousand one.
How many, how many copies a year?
Oh, yeah. I'd probably say eight thousand, roughly eight thousand a month.
Well, seven hundred and sixty eight bucks on top of the lease amount, just your, your coffee. Is the eight cent copy including the. Is the price per page, including the toner or the toner?
So, pretty much.
Those parts like.
Yeah. Everything besides paper, paper, paper and staples.
Okay, it's two thousand, two thousand bucks a year.
Buy by twelve. And add the one online to it?
No, that is included.
Okay, difficult.
So one seventy three. So one column, one seventy five is ten.
And right now.
What do we, what do we?
Sixty four bucks extra for the paper that.
We've been paying fifteen hundred extra, plus two hundred and. I want to say it's two hundred and thirteen or two hundred and thirteen.
No brainer.
It's, it's quite, quite a cut price.
Let's say, so one of, I thought it was two thirty two was the quarterly. For the monthly payment, it's two thirty two, like.
I didn't think two thirty two was the new price they had given us from that other company.
And make it point to the county and Ospe uses this supplier, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion. We go with the new. Mono equi- uh, copier from uh, po- Porter Office Machines. Forty amount of a hundred and nine bucks for sixty months. All in favor?
I.
I.
That one's, yeah, we own that, we own that one.
I know, do they take care of disposal? They bring the new one in, take that one away.
I'll ask them that.
Please. It should be part of our contract.
To be a hundred percent honest with you, I tried looking for their contract. I haven't, I haven't found it.
No, we need to get rid of it.
We need to add that to our. That to-do list thing is making sure whenever we do something like that. That we find a secure facility and site file of our contract, because I found in the last year. Whenever we want to find a copy of the contract and.
I have, I have a whole plan for that.
It should, just work on it. You know, let's give it to market, the recycle center.
You gotta get it there first, you can put it on your back today, huh?
I have a chain.
Buying a brand new copier and we're spending this kind of money. They could have.
Yeah, I'm.
She's gonna ask, she's gonna ask.
Take it out, they're gonna take it out anyway.
Okay, moving on, uh, that's order of business Wilkinson Swamp Bridge Culvert. We had our. Couple weeks ago, we had a A T B. A A T B, yeah, you come in to uh, do the presentation. On the pre-design. And. In the last year, we told them that. Just to do the pre-design and not go any further within, with the final design permitting and all that stuff. To stop there and that total bill was fifty four thousand, maybe something like that. We submitted the last bill to the state.
Yeah, so the total was fifty four thousand, the fifty four thousand eight hundred and stuff.
Okay. So we'll get paid for that and we do have the plans for the pre-design. So. What we need to do is decide if we want to go forward for Wilkinson Swamp Bridge. Final design permitting with A T B. That's the discussion.
And if I could add to that, the handout was just a, it was a condensed version of the PowerPoint presentation. What you see here is a proposal, it is a change in the original plan and what was originally. Um. This, the goal and the scope of the project was to do a twenty six foot. So, this isn't even carved in stone that. D E S will sign off on this, they don't see, they don't foresee, Chris. Forty from H E B don't, didn't see any issue with, um. Uh, the state having a problem with cutting it in half. But the original. Plan was in estimations was a seven hundred and fifty, just as this, as you see here. Originally in twenty twenty two is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, four hundred thousand dollars come from the grant, three hundred and fifty from taxation. That original plan of a twenty six foot span, Chris estimated in the, in the, um, to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars. In twenty twenty four. So, because of that, they, they doing the hydrological studies and evaluate and elevations and things like that. They feel that we aimed to do, they did bore testing, um, to see what it was for soils there. They feel now that we could, uh, it could be done with a twelve foot precast, you know, essentially a little bit less than half of the original plan. But still at today's cost, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, when this was brought up originally, I did, I voted against it, I'm going to continue to vote against it. Uh, that three hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. Uh, can go a long ways in some of the oil projects, we talked extensively with the road contractor tonight about Pine River Road. Moving forward, we hear about that, I hear about that, that particularly is being the road person on a daily basis, um. About, you know, roads, we have a bridge that is still out, that has been out for, uh, it's only on eleven years now, a class five road. That still hasn't been addressed and this is a. Highway to summer cottage that is closed right now, the motor and traffic, um, and will continue to be closed probably until mid to the end of May, so. Uh, I've spoken to nearly every resident on that road, including one that lives in sight distance and they say that they feel. As taxpayers, it's foolish for us to, uh, do a project like this. Um, I I spoke with the gentleman that inspects bridges for the state. This wasn't on their list as a bridge because it's not a bridge, because it's two thirty six inch culverts. So it does not create a span large not to constitute as a bridge, so it's not been red listed, it is, um, merely for. A floodplain mitigation, um, project. That if you look at H E B and we're supposed to get that, maybe we did the PowerPoint presentation, if you have a chance to look at that. And they show the elevations, essentially they were standing in a brook looking back at the bridge, the bridge is here. The culvert is here, the proposed is a little bit higher and you still have two blow spots. Five different times last year, the water was over the road and the road was unpassable. So if that is not gonna. It's not going to be solved, it'll be solved somewhat, but even Chris said, the thing would be to put this in and build the road up. So. I I don't see, we wanted to put this out for, for just information for the taxpayers, uh, this was something that was. Um. Was discussed back in twenty twenty two, according to the minutes of September sixth of twenty twenty two, um. When the original, uh, grant came in and, um. So just, just get it out to the public and let them, uh, kind of beat us up and ask questions and. See what their, uh, what their thoughts were and everything I've received so far, if they don't. See any need for us to move forward with this project, so.
Still, if that road is closed, if people living on that road, probably we can have a bigger problem or not.
That's correct. And the people that live adjacent to that road, when I say that, I'm talking about city, Molly, Fober, because they don't get the road, use the road six months out of the year. It's closed from November first to April tenth. By state, by RSA two thirty nine colon thirty five, I think, or only to that. Um, it's the, it's the RSA that grants, uh, highway to summer cottage and that's what that's the plan. Then you have mud season, because April tenth, a lot of times it's still snowing. Then you have mud season, because April tenth, a lot of times it's still snowing, right? The exception is this year. Uh, this is, we're gonna be fortunate this year. Once we reach the April tenth deadline, then we as municipality have to make a decision rather than wanna go in there. Cause it affords you the opportunity to spend money on it, unlike a class six road. But it's not a class five, we have to constantly keep it open, so that's why you adopt a highway to summer cottage. After the last rainy in January, that got washed out and that was a two-foot shelf there. So there was road barriers and then we had snow and snow piles, there was, pretty much gone. But we need to, we're gonna have to go in there, because we know somebody's gonna go off there. So, you know, then we get into the whole who's liable after April tenth. You know, the town can be held liable if somebody drops off and then.
Have leave the barriers up.
So we are getting. We're gonna have to put them back now. The snow is gone because the barriers, you know, they became, you know, decorations and somebody's mannequin.
They got legs?
Oh, yeah, they got legs. Um, I found one of the barricades on Green Mountain Road uh, by the intersection of Almsbridge. And put it at the shed the other day as well.
Unless it's concrete and big enough to get a crane over it.
So we, we are gonna have to, you know. Address the road before, but I mean, the road doesn't get used. I mean, typical mud season, snow isn't going until the end of April. You're talking middle of May to the end of May before you can start to utilize that road. And that's in a good year. Last year, that road stayed south the whole year long and was darn near impassable. So we certainly wouldn't, um, I wouldn't want the fire department to go across it with one of the engines. Um.
You know, when it's squishing around.
It, it, it would, it would get buried, it just wouldn't get buried. So. I, I mean, to spend that kind of money on the road that we utilize, we can't utilize it. You wanna talk about throwing away good money to a bad, that this is it for you.
Any comments, Chuck?
Yeah, I, you know, as long as people are aware that. By dropping this and at least getting half the funding of it. As you just mentioned, we're doing nothing but going up.
But this is, so far, it's actually cost down there.
No, but when you take a look at the grant versus the total costs of doing this.
That's if, that's what we do.
No, that's, that's that.
Yeah.
Right now, you've got something, at least you're covering fifty percent on. If we don't do it and the prices are only gonna go up. If something happens to that culvert, that road is probably gonna get closed and it probably will stay closed. As long as everybody's kind of aware of what those options are. Cause I agree that other bridges in town are gonna need the money.
It's not a bridge, that, and that's, that's the key, that's the key thing, and it's starting to interrupt you, but it's not a bridge, it is a culvert. So in the event of a failure. Because it is a highway to summer cottage.
Yeah.
There are certain laws and rights that we have to open that road back up and put a culvert back in there. Not a bridge. Cause we're talking about putting a box over it.
As long as, as long as D E S approves that, not a problem. But at this, at this stage of the game, I, you know. I, I don't wanna lose money, but I understand the reason. And I just think it's a low, it's a low usage road. And because of the other things you're planning out with the water going on either side of it anyway, but like waters. Putting a bridge in without building up the entire road, which would cost a whole other money than just the bridge.
I agree with both of you. I agree with Chris, I mean, basically, I'm totally against it going forward. We have too many ongoing projects in this town, we have to. Attack. And. So. Make a motion. To decline going further, further with the.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
Alright.
Do you have an all by policy? I'm gonna notify. Now.
And hopefully, the, one of the other thirty-five applicants can. It probably is because it did close the. And obviously, there's, you are aware of the ongoing things that happened last summer. When it came to the disbursement of the money. Cause the original kickoff, the original kickoff meeting. Well, we have, we have a kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
And. Paul was here, Chris was here, fortunately, Chris was here and kept. You know, fantastic notes.
Yeah, I got his notes.
Um, and that kind of. Saved us because when it came time for the disbursement of the money. It was a match. They were only gonna pay the first twelve thousand. And we're on the lane one thirty-two. And we specifically said, I thought that every dime up until the first four hundred thousand, it was great, that's what we were told in the kickoff meeting. And they. Then, you know, essentially denied ever saying that and Chris said. Uh, nope, it's exactly what you said, it's right here.
That's what we showed her Chris's note.
And that's what. And obviously, we had the public hearing to accept.
Yes.
That grant money, because there was never a public hearing else to accept any of the money um, in B R A. Basically said. As long as you guys don't have a spending bottom line of your budget, we're not gonna come after you, so we'll just call this a cancel app for. Spending money without.
That legal.
And called the Mrs. Clark.
And the state probably did say. Yes. Yeah, when she started announcing, basically, she worked the numbers, make sure we didn't. Get charged.
Um, do any of you gentlemen have receipts from the manifest still sitting over there? There it is.
Wow.
Thank you very much. Think these are all of them.
New selectmen making a.
I just wanna make sure that they were doing their job.
Well, the, the new treasurer is doing their job.
It's early transition, the training show.
Going on, uh, announcements?
We do have one. Um, this is on behalf of Town Clerk Tax Inspector. Starting April second, um, Town Clerk Tax Director office will have a trial run. Later hours, um. So Tuesdays during board selectman meetings, every other Tuesday. They will have additional hours, three thirty to seven P M. Um, like I said, this is a trial run, so it can change. Um, but his goal is to be every other Tuesday, normal. Meeting Tuesdays. Um, but if he sees that, you know, not a lot is happening, he may shorten it to once a month. So. That was announcement from them.
Thank you. Public comment?
I've, I've gonna pitch this and I just talked to you about it. Uh, if the board is, I'm bored with it as well, it's maybe doing maybe once a month. Have a department head meeting, I don't know if this town's ever done it. Something that we can all get together more as a team and see what we can, you know, we can talk about things together, you know, not. Seeing each other all in passing, we can all sit at a table together. Say what's going on, say what's on our minds, see what we can accomplish together. So I don't know if we've ever done it. I could spearhead it if you want. I could want Caitlin. It's something that we can all sit together and you can have a conversation like this, not necessarily has to be, I don't know if it has to be public or not. But something that we can all sit together and talk and have a conversation about what's going on in town, what we'd like to try to do better.
So instead of a work session, yeah.
So typically, the department head meeting wouldn't necessarily be a board member, usually the department heads, the boss, the bosses.
Oh, you want this.
I feel like it would be really.
More.
It would be helpful, that way we can all sit around a table together.
So if, if. You might want a board member there. Uh, with the committee assignments, I know that that would typically be something the chair would do. But with my low workload, as far as my assignment to the boards, would you like me to attend those?
Well, it's gonna be a work session, right?
If all, if all three agree, it would be like a work session, yes. Yes, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I just thought it'd be a good idea for us to all be able to, help us work together more, is and get things accomplished together. So it'll give us all a chance to sit and talk to one another, rather than either on a phone or seeing somebody in passing or waving on a road. Yeah, exactly, it just.
I would make a suggestion that we have Mr. Chief of Police, you'd be facilitator of that first meeting.
Yeah, I would be happy to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so. I'll, I can give a Caitlin, we can figure out the logistics of it and try to plan a date and. It's more or less, and whoever, whatever the department heads or so you call it would like to join. We can put it out to everybody, so we can all get together, but transportation, everybody. So we can all have a chance to. I mean, I don't see Mark very often, other than in passing, you know, just. Something we can all do together.
Okay.
Yes.
And the necessity of wide doors, but.
Yep.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, Dave?
Uh, couple quick things, people might just suggest to Michelle that the charge is go to office equipment and supplies. Cause we have that fund, so she's aware of that. Budget committee meetings next Tuesday at six. And. I'll remind the select board. This is the year. And I believe it was Ms. Edwards who brought this up at one town meeting a while ago. That the assessing should go up for bid. And if we're gonna do that, if the board agrees to do that, this is the year to do it. Um. We would have to have an R F P. Put in a warrant article. And get approved at town meeting. And then there's some other logistics that need to be done. And as Mr. Siemens has always said, volunteerism is what I counted about. I would volunteer to work with Caitlin if you guys want me to. I'll devote some of my time to do that and get everything together, because I've got a bunch of history for. As far as assessing to what makes an R F P and all that. Then it has to have been laid out for far as. How are we gonna control the contract, because the contract that I have right now is the, is the older one, I need to know or update if you want me to continue with her. To do that. You have to end up notifying Avatar that you are not gonna enter into your final year agreement, because the town has uh. Requested that it goes up a bit.
So this is next March that we have to put this requirement.
We have to have the warrant article for this in March town meeting.
Similar to.
Yeah, so we'd have to do. You have to end up. Formulating an R F P with all the description, everything we need. And we have to determine if we're gonna do it just for the one year, or you're gonna do a total town plus a full year. So that some things, it's gonna be worked out. I mean, I've got different ways you can do that already, if we need to do that, but. Those have to be formulated, my suggestion would be also. Uh, I have all the assessing companies in the twelve surrounding towns. Hold some meetings with some of the heads of some of those select uh, assessing companies. To get some ideas of what they would prefer to see and not see, and then it will give us a better idea of what we can put together. For an R F P. And then I think we would meet the intent of what the town wanted back, back in that point, so. If you want me to, I'll volunteer to spend some hours with her to do that, that's.
I have no issue with that. I, I'm not gonna turn that volunteer.
You're appointed.
So if you uh. If you could just send me the latest habitat content, I can get, I'll get that together with. With my stuff and. Yeah, and at my timeline, I would think we wanted to be doing that and it's, we wanted to be looking in June, July, picking it out. And I've already worked with Wakefield. Fire is finding out how they did it.
Okay.
So I have some good. Good rapport there.
Did you say the twenty-six is the budget mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Six o'clock, Chris. Yeah. Nationals will like officers and just. Finalize some.
Do you want the whole board there?
It don't have to be, but I, we're not going any over any made. You know, new budgets are gonna be handed out and then I'll be handing out a schedule, proposed schedule to you guys, sort of. Budget committee to look at and see if they agree. And then it'll be same as last year presented to you guys. If you guys agree, this is a joint schedule.
Okay.
You know, the normal things that we have every year.
Yeah. Well, you sound email with all the attachments, right?
I will be, yeah. I was waiting for the meeting before I sent it out, make sure that, you know, who is gonna be the representative? Are you still gonna stay bi-weekly? All those things stacked into the schedule.
These CDs. These CDs do guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Chuck said it, have you got, that's, thank you for reminding me, but do you have your uh, F A N email?
Same email.
So that's still good? Okay, good, thanks. Alright, so, yeah, I'll do the normal thing. Whenever I send by this stuff out, I always add, deep crescent. Lenny, I did before, crescent shutdown.
Any else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Awesome.
Did you say the planning board will accept the most canceled cause?
Yes.
Really?
Yep. Uh.
Yes, yeah, it's because of the uh, ongoing gathering of the information for the lawsuit.
Okay.
Um. If that's gonna be the final date to. Tally and if we're all there, then that causes a meeting, that can't be, that's not allowed, so. I just got an email, I got an email this afternoon from George, so. And. You're not on the planning board anymore as an alternate, right?
Yeah. Supposed to be.
You were only seated for a year.
That's twenty-five unless somebody must get up, but it's fine with me either way.
I just, I, I mean, if you continue, that's great, and I don't wanna speak for the planning board chair, but I do remember I made the motion. Seating on the planning board to accept your nomination for the one-year term.
Yes, I believe you're correct, but if you look at it, Chris, on the website, they. It says. But I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I just, just for, you know. For clarity, I do remember making the motion. Uh, it was the first one, you were the first one we appointed out of the group of people.
Twenty twenty-five.
On the website.
So I don't know what to do, so you guys, you know, they can tell me. Well, well, what we could do too is. You, I mean, you had to, did you take over an office? Yes. We could look at that and see what the data is on though. That's a good idea, yes, I can.
Okay.
Um, with that being said. Um, I'll go ahead tonight and make it, the event canceled, because it's still on the website. And I wasn't notified.
Let me just.
I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, Chuck's saying, Grace had the same thing, so work session canceled for.
March twenty-first.
March twenty-first. As a result, there will be no work session or meeting on the thirty, twenty-first of March.
Alright, so I'm gonna update that tonight and I'll make sure it's canceled. So that way, it's on the website.
Right. Any other public comments or else that? Now we have to adjourn, we have a non-public. Going on. Okay, make a motion to go to non-public RSA. Ninety-one. Dash eight colon three, number two.
Second. Simmons, I.
Alright, we're recording.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Awesome.